All right, well, I'm using my cell phone. Everyone ready? Chris, are you the secretary this evening?
I am.
Thank you kind sir. All right, let's call this meeting to order. 6:02 PM. And I would like to call for a motion to approve this agenda or not.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove the presentation from the cooperative strategies from this evening's meeting. I don't feel that we were provided with the study, nearly enough time in advance to review this, it being presented to the community. It's a 12-page study that we just got this morning. And the board is, the board taking this presentation on a study tonight is also in direct violation of policy GP3. I think we need more time to digest what we want to present to the public, if the knowledge is correct. So I ask it to be removed from the agenda.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the agenda for tonight's work session. I'd like to have discussion about that please, further discussion. Is there any further discussion on removing it from the agenda?
I need GP3.
I have it here. What are portions of GP3 specifically?
We weren't given enough time. We are coming into these meetings without enough time to look over the presentations, which we are responsible for putting out to the community.
I am curious. This is an information item. There's no action to be taken. This is educational for all of us. And so I'm wondering if it's appropriate for us to go ahead and let the presentation occur so that we can actually be educated of the nuances of the presentation.
So, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think we have a new board, more dynamic going on right now tonight. And that is where the previously, in the Woodland Park School District, special meetings and work sessions were strictly informational. And the practice of the school board was to receive information, not ahead of time, not ahead of time, on the night of the event. Now, that can change if that's the wishes of the board. That we would do a, you know, kind of a pre-release of the information, hold that information three, four, five, seven days ahead of time and send it to the board. But as has always been done in the Woodland Park School District, a work session is for the first moment of information to be brought to the board at that moment. So when I was requested to present ahead of time the documentation to be listed this evening and to be sent to the board, that was really an anomaly for us and for staff. I think Miles Tuttle spent most of his day today looking at components of tonight's presentation to making sure that he was ready to go. And that was kind of the normal process, that he would walk in, the board would see it for the first time, and then if they needed to see it again next week or the week after, we can dedicate all the time necessary to learning about this. That being said, this is a very sensitive subject tonight. And so I can understand why the board would want more time to review this in the privacy of their own study, to then formulate their questions. So if that's the wish of the board, we can absolutely do that. We delay it for another week, delay it for two weeks. Mr. Tuttle received this yesterday morning, no, Monday morning, and began processing through this. I received it yesterday. And so, as all of you know, I was fully engaged in an activity yesterday with the rest of the board. So my first time reviewing it was also last night when I got home. So I'm here to support the board of what the information you need, but if we're going to go against tradition, I just need a little direction. If we want to regularly take business meetings or work sessions and make those a longer process of review, we can do that, but that's not traditionally been the case in the Woodland Park School District.
Mr. President and Dr. Neal, I feel that this, I don't want this to happen like it happened with the survey from the Summit Learning Platform where it was also just a board work session, where we were supposed to gather information, information that we had not seen prior to that night, and we did not have time to digest it, and it was not an action meeting, like Director Austin is saying, but yet, action was taken by you, the superintendent, that night to put out your plan ahead of the board to, without consulting to the board. And in a private conversation, I asked you about that, and you said, because you have the authority, I don't want this to be a repetition, walking into things that I don't know, and then action taken by the admin after that, when no action was taken by the board. So that is a big concern to me.
Thank you, sir.
I have to agree with Sue's request to delay for much the same reasons. When Sue talks about GP3, I note it's paragraph two of GP3 that says, "The board will hold itself accountable to govern with excellence. This self-discipline will apply to matters such as attendance, preparation for meetings, policymaking principles, respective roles, and continuity of governance." So it's that preparation for meetings that Sue was referencing right there in paragraph two. And I agree with that, and I also recall my feelings about the Summit Learning Meeting. And there was, wasn't just communication from Sue, but for many of us, that we wanted to get materials in advance so we could prepare, even if there's no action plan, there is discussion. You cannot prepare to ask the people who have put the study together, if you have not had a chance to review and digest the study, and to consult perhaps with the author of the study, and develop all of the questions. No business or government runs that way. The governing members are not supposed to be to sort of wheeled out for the meetings, to sit in their chairs when the lights are turned on, and just passively receive information without a chance to prepare and be able to ask meaningful questions, when our public is the one that is expecting us to do that job. If we are not prepared, our public is going to be calling us on it. And as far as this goes, this feasibility study has been promised to the public. At other board meetings, at the Woodland Park Middle School presentation, this is a feasibility study about potentially a charter school sharing space in the middle school building. And there is a ton of public interest in how that's going to work, and whether that's a wise decision or not. This feasibility study is supposed to give information to the board about that. And I just can't get, I mean, 11 hours before the meeting is when I received it. And I did send questions I had from my review that to the superintendent. He has not had time to follow up with the consultant and provide answers to that. And I understand that maybe that's a little bit different than has been done in the past or what the expectation was. And, you know, maybe the superintendent felt like, well, that'll all, you know, come out in the presentation. It is not the way that I do business in anything. It's not the way I campaigned. It's not what I look forward to doing in my job as a school board director, is to just sort of get the information last minute. And I know Mr. Austin has previously expressed frustration about that with other things associated, for instance, with merit. He's wanting to be able to get that information ahead of time. I feel like the process is extremely important and protected, not just for public input and comment, but for school board directors, the people who are tasked with making the decision, to be able to make an informed decision. And so, I know that Mr. Austin and I don't always agree on everything, but I certainly thought of his comments about process, of which I came to this, because I do have questions based on what I reviewed, and I would like to have a sense of those before I come into the meeting. I know I cross-examine people daily. I don't like to do it to people who are professionals, who were hired or worked for the school district. I like to treat them in a more fair manner and not feel like they're being gotcha questions, that they have not had an opportunity to prepare for those questions. So I think this is in the interest of everybody involved, not just the board directors, but also the administration and our consultants, and most importantly, our public, that we have a little bit more time to review this. I ask that the consultant be made available to the board, a quick email her questions if you have any. She can reply all, so that every board member, you know, gets the information back. I think that'll make us all better informed in a short delay, would not be against the public interest. So I would be second to Sue's motion when it comes to vote.
When did, I've been at work all day. I have not even looked ahead of time. I barely made it home to change my clothes. I have not had a chance to look at it as well. Mr. Austin, do you have any, what are your thoughts again on this?
Yeah, actually, with regard to pace and regard to the importance of this topic, I think I'm fine with waiting. I think it actually is, I'm hoping that it will actually set a tone for us as a board, that we could actually be more deliberate in our approaches towards some of the big topics that are on our table. And so, given the rationales, I'm fine with waiting. I know that's a disappointment to me. I apologize for that. I didn't know this was actually going to be adjusted tonight. So there's just cause on the other side. I think it's fine if we want to pause and just give ourselves some time to formulate some good processes. If there was actually going to be a Q and A, which I believe there's going to be a Q and A, that's part of the presentation.
What would be an appropriate length of time? When would you like to revisit with a presentation from, about this, from Susan Miller? What would you guys think would be an appropriate length of time to review? When would you like to come back and have a presentation?
I certainly wouldn't need more than a week. I think there would be time to send an email to Susan or to the superintendent, have the superintendent forward it along, get a reply back, give sufficient time for other board directors to review, to follow up questions. I think that should be plenty of time if we think we're going to be setting a meeting next week.
We tend to have a meeting next week on merit charter contract. It could just be incorporated into that, but that's the pleasure of the board.
Would that work out for you and your staff?
We're here to support the board. And if they wanted to lay tonight and ask more questions and clarify, we can do whatever.
So next Wednesday would be appropriate. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to postpone, and would you like to change that to postpone until next Wednesday, Mrs. Patterson?
Yes, I propose to reschedule it for next Wednesday.
And do I have a second to, on the motion? Second. Full call vote please.
Kelly.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Presser votes.
Aye. I didn't hear your votes, Earl.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes. Next on our agenda will be governance policy. Yes, sir.
We haven't actually approved the term. So we have, thank you, we have amended the term.
So we are amending it to remove?
I don't think.
I don't think.
Those coming until May 4th, is that right?
Unless there's any further proposed amendments, I would move to approve the agenda as of this.
Thank you. Do we have a second to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Full call vote, Mr. Secretary.
Kelly Morton.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Presser votes.
Aye. All right, let's move on to governance policy review.
Mr. President, policy reviews are done in just really a conversational sense. You all were setting these policies a couple of days ahead of time. It's a really good chance for the board to talk about specifically, what do you think about your committees? You've been through a couple committees now. I know that Mr. Illingworth, Spatterston are both on the Voces Committee. You came to the District Accountability Committee with Mr. Austin. In addition, you and Sue sit on the committee related to facilities master planning. So the point of tonight is for the board to say, does this, does this policy work? And is that something that you, you know, want to continue? Because this is this one time of the year that you look at this policy. Otherwise, it goes back on the shelf, and we revisit it again next April. Of course, the board at any time can pull a policy up to have it reviewed, but that's just the standard cycle of review for policies. So you have GP7 on committees, and then GP10 is monitoring board performance.
Thank you.
And it's going to be as long or as short as the board wishes. Sometimes it's two minutes and done. Sometimes it's likely discussion of major modifications.
So this policy was revised less than a week ago. And I'm fine with the way it be. I actually appreciate the committees that are functioning. I think one of the things that might be important for us as a board or for you, Dr. Neal, is to communicate to the committees what their expectations are, their roles. I think there has been some question about that, in particular with the District Accountability Committee that I sit on. There have been some adjustments or at least some perceived changes in the expectations. And I think it would be, it would be who us to be very clear with the committees, the spokes are giving them their time and energy and thought. I think it would be really helpful to clarify for this committee what the expectations are. So.
May I suggest an answer to that, maybe? Would it be appropriate, Chris, to come back, say, normally what we would do is come back in the next business meeting, and the board would have this under discussion again, and we would list each one of the committees, describing the role of the committee in kind of a hard format, and just kind of more of a definitions, maybe appendix to this policy?
Anything that would be clarity to the expectations would be helpful.
Okay. And just by way of illustration, Mr. Tuttle has led the Facilities Master Planning Committee. That wasn't a standard, that's not a standard committee. It's not something that continues on. It's something that happens for a period of 12 months, and then it ends, and then it's over, right? It concludes. So I think we have just-in-time committees, committees that are, you know, wanted by the board or needed by the district. And then we have a standard, tried-and-true hallmark committee like the District Accountability Committee and the Voces Committee. So happy to define what we got today. We can move forward with some better definitions as we establish a new committee. I just left the insurance committee this afternoon, that is a committee that is not monitored or managed by the board. If that were to change, we would go through the process of explaining to the board what that committee was.
Chris, you've been working with the board or with committees here for what, two and a half years now. What kind of feedback do you get from the participants in the committees? Do they, is there a sense that their input is appreciated, recognized? Can you describe that?
Well, I can't speak for every committee. I've only been on a couple of them. I just started with the District Accountability Committee. And I can say that the hope is that they are heard and that their input is taken under advisement seriously. I'm not, I'm not sure. I think as a result of some shifts in like, well, I think specifically with the District Accountability Committee, there was a meeting that got postponed or canceled, and that sent a bit of a message that it was not necessary or invaluable. And I think that was an accurate message to send to the District Accountability Committee. And I think also for the District Accountability Committee to be told that they were primarily a financial accountability committee, when we have in this policy, we clearly define roles and responsibilities and advisement, that that was a confusion. And so I think that the message that may have been sent as a result of those two incidences probably left some of the committee members wondering why they were on that committee. I would want to communicate the value of these committees. If we are actually going to help cultivate a culture of collaboration, I think these committees hold an incredibly valuable role for us as a district. And so that would be my hope in wanting to bring clarity to the expectations to each committee. And I think that that would actually communicate our seriousness about their input and the value of their time and energy.
I agree. One of the things that I had heard is from some people who have participated on it, they just, they felt like it was just for show, that their input wasn't valued or not taken seriously. I'd like, if there's any way that we could adjust that, or even hear from the community, how, I like to hear the input from people who are in the RATU school district. I mean, whether I agree with her or not, I like, I want to hear the input because we represent their interests and their dreams and focus of all the people. So I like, when we have those meetings where each board member breaks up with the.
Linkage meeting.
Yeah, linkage meetings. I like that a lot. And I think if we get serious feedback that way, and if we were to propose any kind of a change or supplement to this, I like that linkage meeting style. You get to talk, you know, with just a couple of people, they, one-on-one, and tell you exactly what they think. I found that very valuable for the last one that we did. So if that's something that might be considered for input into feedback to all of us from these committees, I think would be, would be nice to have, rather than, you know, two of us on a committee, I think is really good, but if we could all get feedback from a committee.
Just, just. When did the board appoint the membership of the DAC?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that too.
In one of your first meetings, I have to go back to Kelly and see what those appointments, those dates were.
I may remember at one point getting an email about various committees, and it was like, these are the board members that are going to be on these committees, like I was selected or recommended for the UBSes Board. But I was like, I don't remember us having an action item. I don't know how.
It may have been in a consent, part of a consent calendar.
Let me check with Kelly on the date. I'm happy to forward that back.
And the other thing is, I'm not sure how we get to, you know, there's a parent from each school and a teacher from each school, and I imagine cheaply people volunteering. But how that's decided, because I was like, I don't remember, you know, I don't remember, we have never got like a, here's three parents or here's three teachers, you gotta pick one.
I don't know if we were the ones that were paying. I think the list was brought to our attention, and basically we were approving that list. I think that that language, appointing and approving, might be used, but my understanding is the administration was instrumental in constructing the committee.
Yeah, we advertised, put in a newspaper, in no disrespect to those that are sitting in the room that happened to be on that committee, we didn't have a lot of applicants. And so we took those that were gracious enough to apply, and so the selection was by the few willing. I don't think we denied anybody access to that.
No, no, I mean, but certainly if you had more people than spots, presumably those names would be brought to the boards of the board to appoints, and performing would be GP7, right?
I don't know if that's happened, but happy to do research on how that's been happening in the past.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a good reason why we have this sort of thing, because when we review the policy, you see if it was here only by the board. It sounds like nobody has any memory of that actually happening. Certainly, if there are volunteers that come up to these positions, or it's one, only, that's kind of a done deal. But yeah, and I think it lines up with what Mr. Russell was talking about, about making sure that these people are valued and their time is not wasted. And so bringing those names to the attention of the board, or bringing them back to, hey, we have not been able to get enough volunteers to get, let's elevate that. Maybe that will help draw interest, and will help all the board members who aren't even on the committee be aware of these policies. It would highlight their work to us just by following our policy and appointing those people. I think that would help make sure that their work is brought to the board.
I like that very beginning. I like the full attention, accolade, privilege. That's great.
Any other discussion about GP7?
I was agreeing and cutting it off at the same time, sorry.
No, no. And so it seems like from this, we only have two sort of permanent committees, the DAC and the District Personnel Performance Evaluation Committee. I'm also not aware of who's on that committee. Maybe there was a consent agenda, or maybe it was something that happened before I was, I joined the board. That's always possible as well. A certain school year started before I joined the board.
Are you able to give us any information, Superintendent, about when that membership is done?
The board has traditionally made this decision every year, kind of on a calendar at the beginning of the year.
And, well, is that like August?
Well, in your case, it was required to be revamped. What's going to happen is you'll have another board member that you'll select after Mr. Bravetto's resignation. So that will become another moment where you'll have to think about, all right, who, what do those committees look like? Does it make sense to change those midstream, depending on the timing of that? So your election caused the reforming of those committees.
Well, but just the board members who are on those committees. I'm talking about the other people who are on the committees.
It's a standard annual.
It's the same beginning of the year. Is that August?
Right. We'll schedule our first District Accountability Meeting in October. We're part four per year. And I apologize to the DAC myself personally. I was slow on the upkeep at the beginning of my fall with the new board. And so we were cramming all four meetings into the spring semester, I think. And we had one back in last December, didn't we? So we have one in the ball, and we'll have, I think, five total, maybe six.
How do you calculate the year?
August.
Oh, really?
August.
Yeah. Not quite, it's not the same as counting, you're not quite the same as.
Yeah, it's just a calendar score, you're like, it starts, and everybody, everybody's hair's on fire. We'll probably have the first meeting in September.
So sometime in August, the Board of Education will have to reappoint members to the DAC and to the district.
I think you're going to have to do that anyways when you have a new board member coming on. So maybe sooner than.
Anything we, you want to reappoint everybody to the DAC at the time?
You actually could just simply let that person draw the short. You actually could just simply let that person draw the short straw, whatever Mr. Bravetto was on, and that person fills that slot. You could do that as well.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how it would go in the immediate course of business. Board member changes, not the same, but the new election of a candidate.
Kelly has it on her calendar, which month that she brings it to the board and says, hey, these are the committees from last year. Is this what you still want to do for next year? And I believe that initial discussion is on August and September is approved.
That being said, there are terms to these committees, so it's not an automatic rollover of the same committee every year.
Right, well, as a superintendent of saying, you gotta advertise it. That's on the board. So I'm just trying to understand your outlines as to when it would be advertised.
And so that has changed actually in the last year as well. The board did not, the district had not previously had several of these District Accountability Committee member roles. And so the previous board, you had gone through and established a few new roles, which for us, we don't have to, maybe we have to advertise it, but we wouldn't have to take the newspaper ad out like we did, we put it on our website. We did everything we could do to try to get the one person, quite frankly.
Well, anything we can do to make sure that we raise community awareness about these committees and the importance of what they do and encourage volunteers? Consistent with the law and the policy is also good. It is certainly consistent with my campaign and something I remember talking about it for yesterday, one of the mottoes was transparency and accountability. And it seems like, like you say, making sure that this input is hard and guiding to go towards the motto that was all of my bills.
Thank you. Any other discussion on G P seven? Unless we move on to G P ten?
Mr. President, just real quick, I'm leaving G P seven as is. At the point at which the board would say, hey, let's change this, would have just been now. And so we'll leave G P seven the same as it is. And should the board choose to bring it up at a later date for a specific change, otherwise we'll see it again next April.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I do have one more question. Mr. Austin, you said it was just revised last year. You recall what the change was?
Yeah. About looking at the previous draft of this, the previous G P seven, my recollection is that there was a membership adjustment to bring more equal weight to those who are employed by the district and those who are not employed by the district that are community members, that there would be a more equal distribution of the members of this committee. And so there were numbers that were shifted and that's what I recall. I, I think of the previous board at the time, it felt like the membership of the District Accountability Committee weighed a little heavy on district staff and they wanted more community input and community membership on the District Accountability Committee. And that's why the adjustment was made.
So number, number seven here says that members will be selected by the board and through the district and community request for, for interest in serving in the D A C. So, you know, we, we do choose those, but two board members, do you remember which? You don't remember which one, so it'd be one through six. So we've got, we've got one parent from each school.
I have this one in mind because it was nearly impossible for us to find. Number six. Number six was really tough. And that, I think that that was added and that was for the sake of the public. We just read two residents in the community who are A, not parents, B, they're not employees, C, they're not related to be a parent or related to a parent, or D, they're not employees of the district. So a little bit duplicates it.
That's a, that's a pretty limiting category. They're not related to parents or employees.
Exactly.
So, cause otherwise you, you just end up with a spouse and employees.
Exactly. So that, that's probably our hardest category. It was one that was added. That's a needle in a haystack. Because really, as the third largest employer in town, that's, that's pretty tough to do.
Well, and if you look at number one, maybe this is what Mr. Austin was referring to as well. It says three parents are required by law, but ours requires at least one from each school, representing each school's school of accountability, which is four of the three schools. So that would be five parents. Sorry, maybe that, maybe that put your work at risk about sort of beeping up the community representation of non-staff representation.
I think that was the intention when the change was made in twenty one.
Any other discussion on G P seven and are we going to make any changes?
No, I don't have any.
No changes?
Is there anything you need to sign?
No, that's, it's just a work session. So if the board was to suggest a change, I would bring those changes back for discussion again and probably action at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Doesn't happen a lot. Again, once or twice a year, the board will come in and say, yeah, we really wanna change policy and our, the way that we govern ourselves, your G P's. So we'll move on to number ten.
Just for a point of reference on that, there would be a process that is actually outlined in one of our governance policies about how to change existing policies. So there's a couple of readings and so we can definitely refer to that policy and adhere to that policy if we were making changes.
Yeah, I think an amendment just requires one reading and a new policy requires two readings.
Okay, let's go on to G P ten, monitoring board performance. For so for everyone who is here, the purpose of monitoring board's governance process, board superintendent relationship policies to determine the degree to which the board is following its own policies. The board will monitor itself using the following process. Shall we just read it?
I, I like the fact that you're reading this stuff.
All right, I'm telling you, continue. One, each board member will review the board policies scheduled for monitoring and adjusting G P A E prior to the work session and determine whether the board is in compliance or not in compliance with the policies being reviewed. Two, if one or more board members questions whether the board is not in compliance with a specific policy or policies, the board president will include a review of that policy on the work session agenda. Three, appropriate action will be taken as necessary to ensure that the board will be in compliance with each policy prior to the next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Four, the board will vote on whether the board is in compliance or not in compliance with each policy as scheduled in G P A E and make a public statement on the results at its next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Five, appropriate action will be taken as necessary to ensure that the board is in compliance with each policy if the board determines that the board is not in compliance with those policies. Six, those policies determined not in compliance will be scheduled for review at the next work session. Section B, if any board member interprets messages or actions of another board member as urging on violating board policy, that board member should immediately bring up the concern in a positive and constructive manner which allows further discussion and clarification of policy. C, the board will use the following process regarding potential violation of policy by an individual board member as follows. The board and its members are committed to the faithful implementation with the provision of the board's policies. It is important that the board members communicate interpretation of policy prior to consideration or judgment of violation of policy. Interpretation may be the issue and may not be a clear violation. In event of a board member's clear violation of policy, the board will respectfully seek remedy by the following process. One, we'll discuss in a work session between the offending member and the board following guidelines of respectful communication within G P four. Two, if the same issue has not been alleviated after option one, the second step is public censure of the offending member of the board. So this pressed within and on G P four.
So how is the respectful communication is what's outlined in G P four, I believe?
Discussion on G P ten.
So if, from my understanding of G P ten, it's requiring us to actually vote on whether we're in compliance of G P seven and G P ten?
This appears nine times in the course of the calendar year for you to give a self-assessment. Chris, you may have more history on this than I have, but my previous board would actually do electronic self-assessment at the end of each one of their regularly scheduled meetings from August until May, so roughly nine times. It's a self-evaluation, how did I do? And how do I feel my colleagues did, two questions. That is something that has not been necessarily, again, if you'll notice the last two, two lines of this policy, it says that the board will have a monitoring method of self-assessment. Those monitoring frequencies are described by August, September, October, November, January, February, April, May, and June. So it is a self-governance, how did I do?
Are you seeing the previous board voted individually? I'm not following.
I don't think we actually did that as clearly as what you're describing from your previous board. I think these were put in consent calendar, like after we had a discussion about this at our next regularly scheduled board meeting, it would be that when we approved the consent calendar, it's basically saying that we agree that we've been in compliance with these policies. And so that's how that's been functioning. I think that there's probably a more clear and direct method that you're describing, but I'd be interested to hear a little about actually.
So again, what's been happening in the past is the board would see this on the agenda, would just self-reflect, it would show up without any talking about it, and it would be automatically approved on consent. So it would be hold into the person who was offended or the person who had issue to bring up the fact that they felt that one of their colleagues was out of compliance of this. And so following issue number one on the tail end of this policy that they will discuss in the work session between the offending member and the board. And so basically it would be left up to, if you saw one of your fellow board members, and one of our policies we spent a lot of time on is receiving gifts of more than a nominal value, you would have that discussed at the next board meeting and said, hey, sorry, you know, taking a gift more than a nominal value, I have a problem with that. You would discuss that and find yourself out of compliance in G P ten and then go and resolve that issue as a board. So it's really a platform or a starting point for the board to hold itself accountable conversationally. This board has traditionally done that by way of offending person would bring up the offense and the board would discuss it. I've done it the other way where the board would self-evaluate each month electronically at the end of their meeting, how do they feel like they did personally? How do they feel like the board did globally? And so that's a, that's a walking trail of how you felt like you did.
Like other boards sent you an email after a meeting saying, you know, like, is it in compliance with G P ten and G P seven? I don't think all board was.
Kelly, Kelly would keep track of that. And if at any point any one of the board members felt, no, I was, did not feel the board was in compliance this evening, I would like to talk about that by selecting option B, then that will become an automatic discuss at the next work session between the offending member and the board. So by actually marking out of compliance, you're saying, I wanna talk about that.
But this, as I understand, is that specific to G P, that's outlined in the G P eight? That's any of the governing policies in the board, correct?
Right, so I use the example of receiving gifts, of receiving gifts higher, higher than nominal value. Right, it could be any, not just behaviors at the board meeting. Any behavior, opportunity or anything not in compliance with the policy.
I remembered reading something in here, I'm just trying to quick find it, that I thought that the method of confronting a, what appeared or could possibly be a violation of policy was to be done privately, one-on-one at first. And then if it is not, is that in G P four? That's what I, I thought it was, but I couldn't see it there and I quick went through it. Well, I guess it could be under, starting in ten, G P four, ten, in times of disagreement, first attempt resolution, one-on-one. That, yes, you're right, Chris, that's where it is. Then involve a third-party facilitator, then finally attempt resolution by the full board. So it doesn't escalate to a public full board at first. So it'll be G P four, ten, and then.
Is that for a disagreement or is that for a violation of the board policies?
I guess this is in time of disagreement.
So the other, G P ten, more of a violation, more of a violation of policy.
Excuse me, but I disagreed, I might have involved.
So we don't think there's a conflict between the terms of G P four and.
Maybe a lack of clarity. One is disagreement and the other is offending, word is offending rather than disagreement. So the whole concept of G P ten is about policy, not about your feelings for how you feel about each other. How you feel about each other is much more G P four. Nevertheless, really missing words.
So just as an example here, and I guess we don't need to keep going along on this, but if I'm rude to one of the, let's say to Mrs. Patterson during a meeting, David, who would come to me, address me privately first and say, hey, you were rude. And if I kept being.
Hey, just G P four, you.
A G P four. So that one of the board members should come to me and say, hey, Russell, you were rude. You have very. And if I don't, I say, well, screw you. Am I allowed to say that?
Not on the recording.
Yes, I'm not allowed.
Well, actually, that, you know, it is vague because that actually is a violation of policy. Public, like, not even publicly, your private conversation. We, we are held to policy to function in a, with a measure of decorum that is professional. And so it could be debated that that was actually a violation of policy. So this is where, yeah, I think it's important to bring some clarity because I would actually like us to kind of up our game on self-reflection and compliance with our own policies. And so that means that we could do that in a, in a, in a way, I think, you know, I think it's respectful to have a conversation with someone privately, but I don't think that's necessarily what the policy is telling us we need to be doing. I think we need to call ourselves account, to account in the public eye.
Now, how would that look to you? If I was rude to Mrs. Patterson?
Yeah, that, you know, again, there's some nuance in that, like, to what degree was that a violation of policy? I think, I think for me, I'm just kind of interested in the idea of a regular self-evaluation and a mechanism by which we could communicate to you, President Russell, and to you, Dr. Neal, that there's someone on the board that is feeling like you're not in compliance with policy without having to call someone out initially. But then if there was a way for that to be communicated, you were saying electronically or some way of a self-evaluation, that that policy could then be brought to discussion in the work session next time in a couple of weeks. And there would be time for reflection and it would not be an impulsive confrontation. It would be something that would have a process that, by which we could formulate our thoughts and have a sense of, you know, cause, cause the agenda would come out a couple of days before the meeting, the work session, and we would have an opportunity to all evaluate that, that policy. And then we can come to the table in the work session and have an intelligent conversation about it. I think that process would alleviate the disrespect of calling someone out publicly without an opportunity for us as a board to discuss those policies in a work session. So I'm kind of interested, more interested, Dr. Neal, in that process.
So would you like to sort of maybe see the language and process set up for G P? So would you like to sort of maybe see the language and process set out in GP four be placed into GP ten? And I mean, you could be, you could say, you know, that it will be communicated in the same process as set out in GP four or something like that. Is that, is that what you're interested in?
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't actually looked at GP four, so it's pretty fresh.
Yeah, but we're recognizing that there's some ambiguity, maybe conflict between GP four and GP ten's process, they seem to be covering some of the same ground. And, and maybe we should look at bringing the language in GP four and GP ten to closer conformity with each other. Eliminate confusion, possibly it's better process, but maybe we should take a look at that.
I think that would be fine. I think maybe that could be scheduled for our next work session. Is that GP four and GP ten or any, any policy related to monitoring board performance and keeping ourselves accountable to? If there's some clarity and if there could be a way to navigate that so that, you know, there is, there is an opportunity for us to approach that with a little lead time and in the work session.
So I'm hearing a secondary review of GP four and GP ten, aligning those as well as any other policy related to board performance? And then a second request for a mechanism or something related to making that process regular or easier to accomplish.
Yes, it goes out of following your procedure, so let's, let's report the policy.
And I have another idea that I want to throw out there for possible consideration, which is adding something to GP ten that is along the lines of nothing in this policy shall be construed to limit or otherwise conflict with the authority, power, duties, rights, responsibilities, and obligations vested in the Board of Education or individual directors of the Board of Education by law. This is, you know, when we were elected and sworn in, we're sworn to defend the law and constitution of the United States and the state of Colorado. What I want to avoid is where you have a policy that perhaps is infringing on right power, duty, obligation, whatever is set out by law. Like, you know, take for instance the DAC that's set out by law. And you can't have a policy that would infringe on what the law already had to it, right? And says, well, you need one parent, we can say we might have ten parents. So I, I think that in a case like this, where this is talking about violating the policy, you could have a director who says, I was following the law, you know, and I can't be held, if I'm following the law, I can't be in violation of the policy because the law prompts the policy. So if we just have something in here that says, this is not going to be construed, interpreted in a way to suggest that a board director or the board itself, by following the law is a violation of policy, it'll be clear that that's, that's not going to be a violation of policy. Following the law is not going to be a violation of board policy. Or could endeavor really. So that's something I think should be added to a policy like this one. So we can, we can talk about that in the next board meeting.
Could you write that down and then just send it so we would have that language?
I could write it down and it's the sort of thing that you probably should, you know, get the, get the review by the attorney as well because it's, that's kind of a standard of laws.
It is.
Policy contract, you see them within the law itself that maybe we're talking about this, but nothing in this section is going to construed, limit, you know, other sections of law. And that makes clear to whoever's reading and trying to follow the law, everybody is always trying to follow the law, not just here, but every time in life, they should be able to understand that if they're following one law, it's not going to make them violate another law. They have to be written together. So I just think in this situation, it would be useful.
That might fit somewhere under C, the board members are committed to a faithful interpretation of the provisions of board's policies. There might be some room in there for that because they didn't, because you were kind of an interpretation. I guess that was saying, the law will always do procedures.
Right, you, you shouldn't be putting a board or a director with this houseless choice of like, well, I think I'm following the law, but then that means that if I did, I'm following the board for violating a policy. You make clear that policy is always going to conform with the law or foremost, eliminates that kind of problem.
Well, then the policy itself, no, I'm sorry.
No.
Then the policy itself needs to be, it's not following the law.
I know, but this is one of those things where you often see where you might have a, you might have a law that like looks good on its own, but then like it can be applied in a way that's a violation of other laws. For instance, you see that with First Amendment cases or equal rights cases or things like that, where somebody says, well, this, this law sounds fine, but as it's affecting me, it's violating rights that I have, it's an as-applied issue. And so it's kind of a standard thing to put into, I'm sure we've looked at on our employee contracts, we see provisions within there to say, nothing in this contract is going to be construed in a way that would violate state law or something like that. It's just sort of a generic thing.
Bring it to the work session, I think.
Yeah, I think that would be... Yeah, I mean, if I thought they had something in here that was on its ace, you know, in violation of law, then yeah, I would say we should strike it or add it, but just to sort of clear of how we would, how any of us would interpret that we're following this
I'll work with counsel, sort of.
Well, I would say agree.
Okay. Is there any further conversation or discussion on GP ten?
So clarified?
With that on the work, next work session, along the...
So at least on a future one as long, but we're going to be doing next Wednesday.
Right, next Wednesday will not be a regularly scheduled work session, it will be a special meeting specifically for probably the approval of merit charter contract. It will be a special meeting for that purpose. But I will take the time and try to co-join or at least crosswalk, is the word that I would use, crosswalk between GP four and GP ten. And then looking at a mechanism for evaluating or self-evaluation, pull a couple of samples, bring those back to the board, and then work with attorney or counsel on nothing in this policy shall be listed to restrict, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I think we can turn to those contracts. It's not sort of a...
Okay, let's move on to row numeral four. We will at this time adjourn the work session and call a special board meeting to order. I'd like a motion to adjourn the work session.
So who?
Second?
Second.
Illyn?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Russell Holt?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I would like a motion to go into our special board meeting. So who? Second?
Second.
Illyn?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Russell Holt?
Aye.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Austin, I'm showing seven o'clock straight up. I would recommend Mr. Tuttle and Mr. Gusterson to remain as those two topics are specific to their work, and that's the pleasure of the board. So on that, folks, members of the community?
Well, this is our special board meeting. Yeah, we're not in the meeting session.
My fault.
Okay, so are we have under this?
I can't get this out yet.
That, you don't have to leave yet.
We have to leave, we just have, just a minute. That was my fault, overstep.
So we have a board action item, a resolution to declare vacancy for Director District D, the Gateway District, and I have a resolution here to read, I believe. I do not have a resolution to... Yes, I do. Here's the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Austin. Ludlum Park School District RE two resolution, whereas Gary Bravetta, Director District D, Gateway Elementary Boundaries, submitted his resignation to the Board of Education on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and whereas the Board of Education voted to accept that resignation on April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Ludlum Park School District RE two as follows. Declare there is a vacancy on the Board of Education for District D, Gateway Elementary Boundaries, which has a term ending November twenty twenty-three. The Board of Education calls for a public notice to be placed at the Fight Pete Courier announcing said vacancy. The Board of Education will accept letters of application from interested parties living in the boundaries of Gateway Elementary School until May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. The Board of Education will hold interviews with said parties with the intent to fill the Director District D vacancy by appointment within sixty days of this declared vacancy. This is adopted April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, Ludlum Park School District RE two, Board of Education. We need a signature by the Board Secretary and the Board Education President.
Actually, we need to make a motion.
We need to make a motion to accept this resolution? Do I have a motion to accept this resolution? So who? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, I'll make a...
You make that.
Illyn?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Russell Holt?
Mr. President, can we, can we make a management to get a copy?
Of course, happy to do so. Tomorrow morning or this evening? Oh, that's Kelly's, Kelly's sending, sending that out.
Is Kelly signing or Chris signing?
Chris is signing it. And then we have scheduled that posting to be in the Courier on Friday by the deadline, so we'll have it out in the next Wednesday's paper.
You have a copy, Mr.? I don't. They give a copy. We can't hear.
I've got a copy of the resolution right here.
Here.
Pass it down to... Sarah, must have skipped your packet, sorry.
Has anybody double-checked the law, the sixty-day clock set out in the law? I thought, and I had read it a long time ago, it was like upon the board accepting the resignation, which we did last week, and here we have a resolution that does more. It's like, the clocks start last week or they're starting with the resignation today?
It starts today. It's my understanding also. And I know that Kelly ran through some pretty good girls last summer, and we had two of these happening at the same time. She actually went to several classes on how to do this.
Oh, did she?
Yes, she did. And so she went along through the double process last summer.
Is there any other discussion about the resolution? All right, then we need to adjourn this session and go into executive session.
And now may I suggest that Mr. Gusterson, that Mr. Tuttle join us?
Mr. Gusterson and Mr. Tuttle, we can join, you have the line, the line. Thank you, everyone, for your assistance this evening.